We are going to go into executive session to discuss employment history of an individual, and then we'll come out and resume our regular agenda. So I'll make a motion to go with the executive session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Larry, do you want to speak? Okay, continuing our regular agenda here. Just came out of executive session. Next is Resolution 01, 2020, authorizing mayor to sign fire protection service agreement with Phillips Town.
Is this the same that we always?
I think so.
Doesn't it usually have a number in it? Doesn't it usually have a number?
Well, it says here under the terms and conditions of this fire protection agreement.
And I don't see a number in there.
What's that?
I did, we were looking for this, but I don't see a number.
I don't see a number either, so I imagine it's the same one with the agreement.
It's in there under pen.
Suppose you have an extra pen, do you, Mike?
What's that?
Pen's number four.
Yeah, sixty-two nine seventy.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Eric.
No.
So I make a motion to approve the resolution, approve of Resolution Number 01-2020, authorizing mayor to sign a fire protection agreement with Phillips Town.
I have a second motion. We'll call both.
Trustee Early?
Yes.
Trustee Miller?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Bellotto?
Yes.
Mayor Morandi?
Ah, yes.
This is the street number three?
Yeah, I know. Hold on, Marie, are you okay?
I'm okay.
Rushing through here. Request of hops on the Hudson to prevent Dockside Park, five-thirty and five-thirty-one. For discussion here.
John's not here.
John's not here, so everything's good. I personally am not for this at this time. I'd like a little more time to digest.
Yeah, I don't see an event this large in Dockside.
I think there's a, judging by what we have down at the, down at the, down at the field, there's no way we could have it down in Dockside. We're using the whole highway department for parking. We don't have that down there. Using all the parking in front, we don't have that down there. And there's, you know, just the amount of cars would have to be going in and out of there to set everything. I don't see how that.
He's talking about putting about a hundred tents up.
But those are tent by tents. Each vendor probably bringing around, but we should have this discussion with John.
Well, I think we can have a discussion without John for that part of it. I mean, I mean, you can see what he's, what he's planning on doing, having all these tents around this whole area. And there's two thousand people there down at the park.
I thought that there were times when fireworks had over a thousand people at the park.
Could've been.
Yeah.
So the park is capable of holding that many people all at once. And during this, there'd be people coming and going.
You're also talking about shutting down Lower Main for a substantial amount of time like we do for July fourth. Usually Lower Main's shut down about two o'clock till after fireworks at nine-thirty, ten, so Lower Main's shut down till at least ten-thirty, eleven o'clock till all the people are out of there. That's closing the whole Lower Village for whatever times he's gonna have.
And no vehicles are allowed in the park either?
Uh, that, yeah.
During fireworks, during the fireworks.
No, no, there's no vehicles allowed.
On this, you're gonna have to, everybody's setting up their tent. Down here, everyone comes in, they drive into, they drive into the field through the gates, they set up, and then they pull back out again. And they pull right up to where they wanna, where they're gonna go.
Some of the vendors we have have had for July fourth go down early, drop their equipment off, and move out of there.
Yeah, but this is a whole bunch more tents.
Yeah, and this is two days.
It's not just a hoppy house and some beer, you know.
This is a ticketed event with alcohol and vendors, and I don't see it going in Dockside. I really don't.
Lynn?
I don't know. It feels, it feels really clustered in there. You know, looking at this map that he provided. I mean, it's not really all that helpful because we don't know where forty-potties are, or what any of these things really mean other than tents. And I thought, I thought in any event, we were supposed to, we were planning to keep a part of Dockside open for the public instead of closing it altogether.
I think that's a very important point.
Yeah, if he's gonna have a ticketed event, he can't have it there. Because he's showing food trucks on the right-hand side and restrooms.
Lynn's point is the most important. You can't have a ticketed event. The park agreement says the park must remain open for visitors.
Right. You can use a portion, but not all of it.
Yeah, Mayor's Park, he's got the fence, and he can sell tickets and go in. I mean, the other thing is too.
We have a ticketed event with the Ascend, and they have theirs down there.
Yeah, but they're not two thousand people.
Yeah, that was like two hundred people.
Yeah, I know. But I mean, we can't say that because of a ticketed event, you can't have it there. Because we've, we've.
But it's the amount.
Cut off the area, you know, a section of it for other, other events.
Yeah, I mean, we cut it off for wedding, and we cut it off. But he's working, I mean, what he's showing is tents. This is all tents.
Oh, yeah.
This is food, this is. So he's basically showing that he wants the whole park, and he can't have the whole park.
If you guys want, we can, do you want to have John come in and he can explain it to you?
Yeah, and you know, my other thing in.
Was that Steve?
Yeah, I'd like to have him, just to explain to him the, you know, he's taking up the entire park and.
I'm not gonna change my ideas, but if you'd like to have him in here, I just, I can see what's, what's happening there. And I just think it will be a total, I'm not sure where everyone's supposed to park.
I just think that, I mean, you know, at this point, I could say no. Yeah, I don't, I don't think this is workable. And, you know, he's got two events already in Mayor's Park that he's looking to do. I forget the dates of those, but so he's sort of.
So has he already been approved for two other events? And he's trying to do a third?
Yeah.
He's asked for two pub, two beer things, and now he's asking for a third.
Okay, so we'll table it. Seems like that's what everyone liked to do.
I find it's the same thing right away, but.
I think we're overruled three to two. A straw poll in my mind.
The old straw poll.
Okay, moving on. Appointment of Tweeps Phillips for the Woods for Recreation Department. I know from Ruth, from what Ruth said, she's very interested in having her.
Yeah, it's quite resumes.
What's that?
It's quite a resume that's.
Yeah. I have no problem. I'd like to make a motion to, to add Tweep Phillips Woods to the Recreation Commission.
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Tweeps, and welcome aboard.
Thanks.
Approved hiring of new police officer after recommendation of Larry Burke. The officer is Robert A. Detliff, Jr. He's from Clinton Corners. He's currently a public county sheriff's deputy, and he'll be retiring sometime this month. So we interviewed him, and I'd like to, on Larry's recommendation, I'd like to approve the hiring, or I'll make a motion to approve the hiring of the new police officer, Robert Detliff.
One second.
Oh, I forgot one thing. On the condition that a background check comes up clean. Can we add that, or should I start over, Michael?
Okay.
Are we good? Okay, so I'll make the motion again. I'll make a motion to approve the hiring of Robert A. Detliff to our police force on the recommendation of Larry Burke and from our interview, considering, or condition on a clean background check.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next, approved hiring of prosecuting attorney as per recommendations of both myself and Larry. We met with Andreas Gil, what's his name, Larry? Yesterday?
Wednesday? Sorry, no, Monday.
What was the fellow's, what was the fellow's last name?
Gil.
Gil, G.I.L.
J.I.L.?
G.
Thank you.
And it's A.N.D.R.E.S.
Got it. Thank you.
So as you know, we have to, we need a prosecuting attorney because Bob Tendy, who used to serve that role, will no longer be assisting us. So we have to scramble, and luckily, at the last minute, we did have a number of people. I talked to John first, and his rates were higher, and he get back to me on travel time. We also, I forget, what was the other person's name?
Gordon Fines, I think it was, from Putnam Valley.
From Putnam Valley, who does Putnam Valley's prosecuting, who seemed very qualified. His rates were two hundred dollars an hour. He was flexible, no travel time. And then we met Andreas yesterday, and his rate is a hundred and fifty dollars an hour. He just took on Patterson's role as their prosecuting attorney. You can see from his experience, he's well-qualified, also currently a major in the Army Reserves. Very interested in being part of the village, and he's very interested in serving communities and working with them. Both Larry and I agreed after the interview that it would be a good hire. So I'd like to make the recommendation, or to approve, not the recommendation, I'd like to make the motion to approve the hiring of prosecuting attorney, or for the position of prosecuting attorney, Andreas D. Gil. On Larry Burke's recommendation and my own.
One second.
Discussion?
So he's one fifty an hour, no travel time?
Yeah.
I thought I sent an email by one.
He's studying February.
What's that?
He's studying in February.
Uh, he's, yes, he'll be starting in February. We have January covered. It's a one day a month. It's a second Wednesday, second Monday.
Wednesday.
So one to three.
Second Wednesday of the month for the criminal court, one to three.
And then there's prep time or whatever, that'll be included. And he'll give us a report at the end of each month.
How's the village being reimbursed in any way by the state for?
Larry's giving us, he's chipping.
Larry's gonna forfeit his chair?
Yeah, he's just happy to have one.
Well, it's their requirement, so I'm just curious if that's.
No, there's nothing.
So that's a thousand bucks a month we pay out of the.
Probably less than that, but probably like six hundred at least.
Oh, because he's one fifty an hour, that's right. I was thinking two hundred. Now, can we, is it deferred, like in, say, if a person gets a fine, can you, I mean, are you allowed to change the fine so that the village is able to receive the money or anything? Add a surcharge or something, because the village now has to provide it?
But they won't add a surcharge for that specific, for that specific money recouping that we're looking for, but with a prosecuting attorney now, other fines can be looked at, other fine, like it's making it a certain charge, it is in the law that you can knock it down to a different vehicle traffic fine, which you can recoup some more money depending on what fine it's knocked down to. That's something he will prosecute for us before the court. And then whatever fines they are, they will be added into what we collect now for summonses and other fines and bails that are collected from traffic and from criminal.
Okay.
So it may, it may or, it may or not offset what we're gonna, what the budget is allowing for the, it's something you need to look at on a quarterly basis to see.
Figure it out.
Yeah.
Okay.
So do I have a, we have a second on that, and.
Yeah.
All in favor?
It's already done.
I don't think we both said all in favor.
We did.
You did.
We didn't.
Nope. Just seconded.
No, we had a second and didn't.
Okay, I'm ahead of the game.
All in favor?
Aye.
Did you have what you wrote down?
You feel better now?
Not really, but.
You didn't write name, did you?
Let's go back to the video, Michael. Can we rerun that right now? Let's see this. We'll start the year off right. Okay, just in time, Roberto has entered the room, and we're on number seven. Climate Smart Phillips Town Task Force. You're up. No, you're not ready? Okay, too bad. Next.
We'll skip.
All right, thanks a lot. Hey, Larry.
Yep.
The, where were we with, Jeff didn't put Dave Marzola's name.
That's why I didn't, that's why I was staying. Um, we're gonna work with Dave right now. It looks good for the five K he's looking to do in the village. He just wanna tweak the road that he wants to use. So instead of going up Main Street to Rock and closing off Main Street, we're looking to go through Forge Gate. If that's a possible route that the marathon can run, or that the marathon, the five K, I think that would be the best bet for us, not closing off Main Street for that, for that, for that day, for what he's looking to do. So he's, he's looking into that. Again, I spoke to you on it, and I don't know if we have the right to do that, or we have to go through the president of Forge Gate to get permission. That's something I was leaving up to.
And David's looking into that.
Yes, no, and we both agreed that that was probably the best route to do it. This way, we could still not, still be able to hopefully drop passengers off at the MTA, not run into the train schedule, like you drop them off at Lower Main, so it won't have Lower Main closed off. I'll just close off Long Terrace right from Market Street, so they make the right right at the Forge Gate, and then continue up the path there if they're gonna go. And this way, it also would help us with bringing, bringing the church services on Sunday to get people down Main Street and into the Church of Fair Street for the services.
Okay.
Who's gonna contact Forge Gate?
I think Dave, last I spoke to Dave, he said he was gonna try to.
Dave Marzola.
Dave Marzola's gonna try to contact them and see what they say with that.
So I'll leave you with him, and we'll wait till he gets back to us on that.
Yep, he's gonna get back to you soon, as an answer on that, and we'll.
And that was the only, the only hitch?
Yeah, I think that was fine. I got contacted by the sheriff's department today, Lieutenant McManus. He said that whatever we need, if we need to want, you know, a couple extra officers for that day, as they, as they go up into Nelsonville, to cover up the main crossing areas, which would, well, through Nelsonville would be going across Main and then back down again, and for us would be nine D, going across up by Downey, and then back down in the village, down by the light, just so we have safety for the runners, because that's a very heavily trafficked area for vehicles. So we have a lot of people out there looking to help out.
And they're aware they're paying for any, if we have extra police there?
I had, I had discussed that with them, and it's, we need to look into that a little further also, but I don't think that's gonna be a problem.
Okay. All right, let us know how many, how many guys think we're gonna have to have on that day.
Well, that's the whole thing, I told them, we need to have pre-registration. I said I need to know, now, the shortest amount would be two weeks before the event. If I need to bring in any extra officers, stuff like that, that you need pre, you can't just have people walking up and now, hey, everybody join the run. So, you know, if it's, if it's what we're thinking, we're thinking anywhere between three and five hundred people. But with the pre-registration, two weeks in advance, that gives me enough time if I need to bring in an extra person or two.
Is that something we might be able to get, if somebody, we have qualified volunteers for crossings?
Yep, we've, we talked to him that. He said he's got a bunch of people that wanna volunteer, and I can meet with them beforehand and explain exactly what we need to do. So instead of having maybe police over that, that area, we can have just a volunteer to do that. We did speak about that.
Okay.
And to hold back or whatever, if there's a crowd or something like that, or just get safety people from point A to point B.
All right, thank you. Are you ready?
Yeah. Is that for a race?
What's that?
Is that for a race of some sort?
For the home.
Oh, okay.
Five K.
Cherry, cherry event, yeah.
That's great.
And they're gonna do two sections of it. I mean, they're gonna have two races, like one, kind of like a walk race for people aren't into, into the running thing.
They have a schedule for May seventeenth.
So I believe there are two topics that Jeff put on the agenda. The first one, do you have any preference which one we address first? Either the climate fair or the charging station?
No.
Okay, so the climate fair, the idea that our task forces had is we spent almost a year and a half developing this community greenhouse gas emissions inventory, which is basically quantifying all the emissions into Phillips Town. And we included Nelsonville and Cold Spring within that. One, because we wanted a comprehensive understanding of it, but also in case Cold Spring and Nelsonville eventually pursue climate smart certification, as long as it's within five years of when our report is completed, you can also use the data for municipalities. There might be a couple additional things you'd have to look up, but a lot of it is already done. So we thought it's one example of the town, because it has some more resources disposable. It can facilitate the smaller governments also trying to follow the same steps. So the inventory is done. We're working on the report right now with a company called ICLI USA, and they've been essentially our advisor through the whole process. And they do the quality control on the methodology for data analysis and so on and so forth. And we essentially want to have an event to release the results of it, but not stop there, and essentially have a fair-style event to then provide solutions for the different sectors that emissions come from. And so within our task force, we've broken up into various subgroups of people that are focusing on probably the top five or six sources of emissions, or issues that may be lower down the risk, the list, but are easily acted on, resonate with folks in our community, or issues that people might be passionate about. So some examples are vehicle emissions, that's one of the big ones. It's fairly complicated to solve, but it's still important to address. So we'll have, the idea is to have a table with volunteers with information there, but then go further and have some electric vehicles present. Through an organization called Sustainable Hudson Valley, and they're a nonprofit that facilitates all sorts of sustainability work in Hudson Valley. And they have connections with some electric vehicle programs in terms of helping dealerships update their inventory in vehicles, also doing public education, working with municipalities or large organizations that want to install charging stations, so it also feeds into the next topic. So they want to participate and be present at this event. So it's one example of, we as volunteers will be there and sharing information, but we're also partnering with much larger organizations wherever possible to have a lot of expertise and some hopefully exciting things, like actually have electric vehicles at an event instead of just talking about it, so that people who attend can interact with it and get into the cars, and they can't drive them, but at least see, you know, essentially how the computer system works. Other topics are buildings in terms of emissions, food waste. We have a group looking at land use in general, so it could focus on what you do in your backyard, but also how do you support policy within Phillips Town to make positive changes or continue to preserve land that captures carbon from the air and is also storing a lot of carbon in the ground. So an example is if you develop a marsh, in itself, it doesn't capture that much carbon, but usually, and we've been taking samples out throughout Phillips Town, you can get down to like fifty feet of muck, and all of that is carbon. So if it's developed, and that is lost and essentially evaporated into the atmosphere, it can be a big source of carbon and also methane being released. So part of our inventory is studying, when you make changes in land use, what impact does it have, positive or negative in terms of net emissions? So the idea is, you can do this in your backyard and make some changes, what type of plants you install, et cetera, but it can't just stop there. It has to be complemented with big-picture approaches as well. And it could be supporting the Hudson Highland Land Trust as they're working on a, you know, a section of land that they wanna protect, but also supporting municipalities maybe through volunteering to do research on grants or other programs to kind of facilitate doing some of the preservation work. And then there are a couple other examples that, that we're working on in terms of emission sources that could be present at the event. And we're also inviting anyone who wants to branch out and go further, if there's something that they know a lot about, to set up a table as well. And we'll essentially review what they wanna share. Just because our group of volunteers is limited, so we can't cover every topic. There are about twenty of us, so we've broken up into five or six groups. But we're already spreading ourselves since. So that's the basic idea. And brainstorming in our group, we thought the best place to get people to turn out, oftentimes is the waterfront in Cold Spring, especially when the weather is nice. Bosque Bell is also a decent option as well, but we like the idea of trying to locate it in a place where people can walk to and is also accessible by public transportation very easily. So options are limited in that sense, in terms of where we can host it. But the idea of coming here was also to propose the possibility of collaborating if Cold Spring and anybody wants to participate in the fair, or if it's just like you have too much going on, and it seems like our using that space for that type of event would be permissible, then it could simply just be partnering in the sense of helping us host the event.
Do you think you'd need a dockside, or would the riverfront, or with the docks, I mean, with the dock and, you know, the gazebo and the riverfront park work?
Yeah, we could do that too.
Banstand, banstand.
Banstand.
I have no idea.
Yeah, yeah, either one would be fine.
Just get it out of.
If we do have electric vehicles that are parked, is that an issue in terms of working around the gazebo?
No, we could work.
Banstand, banstand.
Banstand.
Sorry. I'm sorry.
We're confused.
Yeah, this is probably growing up here, and so, yeah, go to the gazebo. Sorry.
How many electric vehicles do you think you have?
Kind of, the sky's the limit. It's up to, so our committee is working on that. They could have two, they could have five to have a variety. It's also, we have to interface with Sustainable Hudson Valley and connect with the dealerships that might like to bring down a vehicle. But the idea is to have hopefully some of the latest technology present, so people can see even between like twenty eighteen to twenty twenty, there's a huge difference in terms of the range of the batteries. An example is the Nissan Leaf, I think two years ago, when we started researching this, had a limit of a hundred fifty miles round trip before you had to recharge. But you would never actually get it that close to zero, so it really is more like a hundred twenty miles at most. But now you can buy a version that has, I think, up to two hundred twenty or a little bit more than that. Nissan Leaf.
Oh, Leaf, yeah.
Yeah. Tesla has, has vehicles much higher, but Nissan's a much more affordable, kind of like middle-class option for most folks. So that's one example that we would hopefully have present.
In terms of like tables, you're talking about the Garden Club and Hudson.
Yeah, they wanna be present.
Trust, how many tables, are you gonna limit how many tables you're gonna have, or because that is.
So right now, we have six groups, so we know we'll have minimum six tables, at least, if all else fails. And then we've had, yeah, Hudson Highlands Land Trust, the Garden Club, but the Garden Club is also working with the food waste committee, so they may just be at the same table. I guess it depends on the space in terms of how much.
And the space depends on how many tables you think you got.
Right. Possibly at most twelve, I'd say. Like, I'd be surprised if we have more than a dozen, just because at a certain point, it gets overwhelming with so many different emission sources that we don't wanna spread ourselves too thin.
Are there speakers?
Yeah, so we will, so myself, and we can invite any elected officials as well, but at least as our backup, myself, Jason Angel and Jocelyn Apicello from Ecological Citizens Project, who have partnered with Phillips Town to help fund our community inventory. And they're also partners in writing the report and so forth, will speak. And we wanna keep the speeches very short to essentially just, and we might even do two different times, if it's gonna be kind of an open event and people are coming and going. So like at two o'clock, we'll present the results, and then again, maybe at three or three-thirty, just to make sure that people who are present hear it or have options to attend. And the idea would be, we would very briefly describe the inventory process of what we did, and what it means, the implications, and then list, you know, the top ten sources of emissions that we found in Phillips Town. And then essentially with that, direct people to check out each of the tables or tents.
And really don't tents for each of the tables?
Um, not necessarily. I mean, if people want to bring their tents.
I'm thinking rain.
Yeah, so if it's a rainy day, we probably would do well to have a rain date, I think. Just in experience, the chances of getting people to turn up for an issue like this, which is generally kind of overlooked, and is very challenging to drum up energy for. The more we have going for us in terms of good weather, favorable location, elephants, elephants, giraffes, whatever can get people to show up to, then I think would be to our advantage. And my sense is if we did it on a rainy day, we wouldn't succeed. It would be detrimental to the program.
So you need a primary date and a rain date.
I think, just from what you're saying, I think the best place would be having it right on the dock and have, you have electricity right there. You have a place for speakers. And you could set up on either side or right on the dock and people can have that.
Right, okay. Yeah, use the bandstand even.
If, I mean, if you have, if it turns out you have more than you think or something, we could definitely move with the dock side. I think it, seems like it's harder to push people onto dock side regardless of.
That makes sense, unless there are fireworks or loud music coming from.
Then they'll only come for that. But yeah, I'm fine with it. We just have to come up with a date or whatever.
Sure.
Check your farmer's almanac.
Yeah, right. We were hoping sometime between Earth Day, which I think is the twenty-second of April, and Memorial Day, if possible, but we're flexible if we need to do it earlier or later. But it seems like that's generally kind of a nice time period to get people out there. Yeah, weather especially.
Early April.
The seventeenth is the hub. Seventeenth is the hub event, five K. Other than that, that's no more, the twenty-third is no more of there we can do it then. So we need to be the ninth, tenth, or the second, third?
What's the fifteen, sixteen, or six?
That's the hub, five K on the seventeenth.
How about the nine, ten?
Nine, ten. The tenth looks, unless, I understand.
Do you want the rain day a week away or after or the next day?
It's a good question. Probably you have expertise.
The tenth is Mother's Day, so.
Oh, the tenth is Mother's Day, so we should probably avoid that, yeah.
Well, don't avoid Mother's Day.
We won't double up on Mother's.
The second, third?
Although I guess we could call it Mother Earth Day or something.
That's kind of a good idea.
So the tenth with the rain date on the, I'm sorry, the second with the rain date on the third or the ninth with the rain date on Mother's Day?
Yeah, it sounds like the second and the third would probably be quite, just to.
All right, we'll tentatively tend you in.
Okay. And what we're thinking was to avoid overlapping with the farmer's market. We tried to do it in the afternoon if possible. So maybe start around two o'clock and go until five. I don't think we need much more.
So can you just, you know, put that together for us?
Oh, yeah, sure, yeah.
But we'll hold those dates and then let us know what the hours are, how long you're going to be there.
How many people do you expect?
I think we'd be very satisfied if we hit a hundred people. I would very much like to see much more than that, you know, maybe three to four hundred, but the odds are maybe, because this is the first time we're doing this. But we're very well set up, at least within our task force, to do a lot of outreach and we have plenty of time to do so. I think the real challenge is to make it exciting and to draw people out to the event. So I think a big emphasis for us is to engage with the schools as much as possible and to try to get youth involved, just because to some degree they have a little more focus on this issue right now. And in addition to that, different peer groups like the Lions Club or the Garden Club, for example, and to ask various groups that we have in this, kind of like a phone chain that we've set up, to really promote it over and over and make sure that people feel excited about it. So what's the policy on like exotic animals being present at the event?
Exotic animal? What will they be doing?
Yeah, just attracting people. We'd hang some magnets around anyone.
I know. I think if they had someone controlling them.
Yeah, very good, you know, elephant rides or something.
Good idea, get something.
Camel rides.
Fireworks.
Camel rides, even better.
You'd have to let us know what you're thinking.
No, I'd be mostly facetious, I think. But, yeah.
Methane contribution might be a problem.
Right, right, exactly. Maybe there's a way to capture it. Anyway, so the other issue, the EV charging station.
Yeah.
So May twenty-ninth at four P M is the grant deadline. And it's through the New York State DEC. They're the ones who administer it. And what's great is they still will cover eighty percent of the cost of purchasing and installing the electric vehicle charging station. So I know tentatively through conversations, our idea has been that Cold Spring would cover ten percent and Phillips Town would cover ten percent. I would also fill out the grant application, so my hours would cover that process. The other eighty percent of the cost would be covered by the grant. And then in terms of policing, like if cars are staying too long or if non-charging vehicles are parked in those spots, there is software that monitors the charging stations. So it's easy to basically connect that to the village police force so that they could have, you know, at least some notice if there's like a time to go down and just loop by it.
I think it has to be penalty for through that software.
How do you tell whether or not a vehicle is an electric vehicle?
Because it's plugged in.
Well, couldn't I just pull a, an electric cord from my car and plug it in?
No, no, it's a very specific type of port. So it kind of looks like a gas tank.
The reason I ask that is one of my neighbors has an electric car and that's exactly what they do. They have a cord, an electric cord coming from the inside of their car to their outlet, outside outlet.
That's because it's a level-one charging station. To be able to do that, you can do it with a hundred twenty volt type of cable, but these charging stations are two forty volts, so you have to, it's a different interface with the vehicle. So, yeah, luckily we can avoid the extension cord.
Now, is the app that tells the police whether or not they are charging, is that something that can be downloaded to the officer's cell phones?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, it says it on the charger.
On the charger, yeah, it has different lights for indication of a car, but yes.
I don't want to have to have to get out of their car.
We don't want to rely on them going by. Yeah, so they can very much have that information on hand.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, no.
Is this going to be usable for any electric vehicle? I know Tesla has their own type of electric charging.
Yeah, level-two charging stations, you can only get the grant from New York State if it's this type of system that any type of EV.
Tesla would also be able to.
Yeah, Tesla, what you have to do, if you own a Tesla, you get an adapter for like eight hundred bucks because it's Tesla, and then you can plug into this. But that's their marketing decision.
I know they have chargers that are just specifically for their cars.
Right. The next level, level three is much more complicated. That's DC fast charge, much faster charging times, but it's much more complicated. So there, sometimes you run into those problems.
How long will it take to charge a car?
Usually the range, it depends on battery size, but for a hundred fifty mile to two hundred mile range car, it's usually three to four hours. That's generally the expectation.
Is there a charge?
Yes, yeah, so people are, they become members of the, so ChargePoint is one company that has been recommended to us. And so people will have their account with ChargePoint and they basically just automatically deduct it for their kilowatt-hours.
And what does ChargePoint do with the money?
Part of it comes back to Phillips Town to pay for the electricity. So actually therein lies another question, yeah, in terms of managing the electric accounts.
Right, who does the account?
Ideally, right now, we would set it up so Phillips Town is responsible for the fee monthly Central Hudson account and paying for the electric charges. And then that comes in from ChargePoint to Phillips Town.
So then, they're going to pay you a hundred, so I own an electric car, I pay a hundred percent. So when Phillips Town gets the bill, it's a wash?
I believe they take, there's a percentage, yeah, so they mark up the price a little bit, yeah. Yeah, just to cover their.
The ten percent, ten percent, eighty percent is just for the setup?
Yes, exactly, not for the actual operation of it.
Does that include the electric pole if necessary? You said there was one nearby?
In terms of the connection to, yes.
Do we have, do we have to run a conduit down the side and then?
Most likely, yeah. Yeah, you would do it underground.
Is that covered in the eighty, ten, ten?
Yes, exactly. Yeah, that's the installation cost. And that includes electrician, any materials for that.
And what is the expectation of the total cost of installing this?
Usually it's around two thousand. So the charging station itself tends to run around eight thousand dollars and then the labor is usually two thousand.
So the village would be about a thousand dollars?
About a thousand, exactly, yeah. That's the standard price that Sustainable Westchester, which has been helping us a little bit through this process, and Sustainable Hudson Valley have found for the level-two charging stations.
So you're saying two thousand for the labor, does that include breaking the ground and putting the station in?
Yep, yeah, sure.
Are guys going to do that or is that?
So, yeah, that's a good question. Details we should figure out in terms of, right, the process. Yeah, we don't need to get into the gritty. But also the question of electrician, the amount is so low. I know at least for Phillips Town, it's well below the need to put down RFP because that would also slow down the process a lot, but if.
We don't have to put it on.
Right, yeah, I figured it's only two thousand, so we can figure that out.
Can we make sure, can you contact the electrician and whoever you want to use and make sure that we can use that pole and there's no unforeseen problem?
So the process is now, if we decide that this is a favorable location and everyone's in agreement, then I contact Central Hudson. They have a form that I have to fill out. And they will do a site visit. Usually they say within a week and they will decide yes or no, if it's feasible to do it there. And usually they say yes. They're very much getting on board with this. It sometimes involves running cable from a further pole to the nearest one and then coming down, which adds a little bit to the expense, but I'm told isn't that substantial.
So we're putting one station with a double?
Yeah, they call them dual ports, so, yeah, it has a two forty volt cable and it's enough for two cars to charge at the same time.
And we can have the two parking lots or spaces be next to each other?
Yeah, yeah, that's ideal. Because it'll be centered right in the middle, like where the line comes up.
So the area we're talking about by, on the other side of the tunnel, there's a, there's a dry hydrant there, so we just have to be aware of that.
Okay.
To the left of that or to the, to the north of that, there's two spots.
Okay, right, so we push it to that side.
And you can push that, I believe that's, we have to check, I think that's our property. But there's the grass lawn there that, you know, so if we can push it, put the station on that, then it won't push the cars further back. So we'll go over down and look at it when.
That'd be great for conduit too, because there's no cement to break up.
Right. We should just make sure, I think it's our property, but Village, I don't think it's Metro North. Do you have any idea?
That would be something.
I looked at the tax map and it showed that, it did not show that it was Metro North from my observation of the tax map.
So they would also set up a meter. So there's a charging station and an electric meter, just so, you know, they can track the electricity.
Yeah.
You want to make a motion to go forward?
James had something to add to the conversation, so.
So I just recently bought an electric vehicle myself and I've got a level-two charger at my business. And it actually can take six to eight hours to charge, so it can be very slow.
What size battery?
Sixty-four watt, so it's a bigger one.
Yeah, it's a little bit there.
But, you know, so, I mean, you know, one of the things is that there are no level-three chargers, the fast chargers at all in Western Putnam County. And I don't think even in Beacon right now, I'm not sure.
No, municipalities are, so far we've been discouraged to pursue that because of, there are a couple issues. So level-three, you can potentially charge a car between half an hour and an hour, which is great. But the cost is substantial. They tend to be around forty-five thousand to sixty thousand dollars. So it's generally a big leap for municipality to take. The other side of it is they have to use three-phase electricity, so it's very limited in terms of where you can actually cite them. So we talked to Sustainable Westchester about this and asked their EV guru, because I was actually really excited about DC fast charge at first. I thought that makes so much more sense. He said, "Don't go there right now. That's generally being reserved for rest stops on highways or specific locations where people are trying to get in and out quickly." So it, yeah, it's hard. The trade-off is the level-two is really like quite a bit down and there's nothing in between.
Well, people will be just topping off kind of any, like they come here and they walk around.
That's often the case.
Walk around for three hours to charge.
Exactly, yeah. Have a meal or do some shopping and then be on.
Is there a limit on how long a car can stay there?
It basically should be based on when it's finished charging. I think the idea of forcing a car off of a charge while it's actively charging just doesn't seem right. People should have that option since they are paying for it. But there is a way to monitor. This car has finished charging and is still plugged in and it's now been thirty minutes. It's time, you know, to.
So what's the parking limit, four hours down there?
Roberto, what's the, other communities, what do they charge in terms of a fine if a person?
That's a good question. I don't know, but I can look it up. Yeah, yeah, I'll find out.
Because it's not covered in our plans.
My experience with ChargePoint and with EV Go and other competitors of ChargePoint is that they give you a ten-minute grace period and then after that, they start to charge you for your time. So in a lot of ways, the penalty's built in, so they'll, they continue, and probably that's negotiable too, so.
Right, in terms of where that money ends up.
I prefer to charge them, fine them, rather than to continue to charge them for electricity. And the reason is that the money, the electricity goes to Phillips Town.
Right, yeah, not should be shared.
But it's not necessarily that you're, you're not necessarily paying, your car is already charged and your, you know, your car is done and the computer knows that. And so what they'll do is they'll start to penalize you, so.
Yes, and that money will go to Phillips Town.
Right, yeah.
Although we can write an agreement to essentially split it or cover your costs, especially for the police force.
Put a sign on it with a sign.
Yeah.
Yeah, four-hour parking.
But I will find out, because I didn't hear about that.
Four-hour, four-hour.
Charging.
If a person requires an hour and a half to charge, you want them out of there?
Well, I just made up that, two hours, an hour and a quarter. But whatever it is, you put it on a sign when you see that.
It's variable, right?
Yeah, right, that's the thing. A car can come in at eighty percent and be topping off and it's quick. Or they could be basically on empty.
You could find out what they, what they do.
Yeah, I'll find out what the.
That's what you're saying, though, they have, the police would know, there's something that would notify them when someone's done.
Yeah, overstayed their welcome, so to speak.
And is there also something, a light or something on that?
I believe so, yeah, I've seen that at some.
Will the person be able to tell from his phone?
Yes, yeah, they got, exactly, yeah, it comes in.
So I think we were talking about on the other side of the tracks, I didn't, I don't know where I left off with this. It seems like that was a good spot next to the dance studio there between there, so it's two spots there.
It's a good spot, yeah, I like that spot.
Okay.
You like the location?
So make a, make a motion to approve locating the EV charging station on the west side of the tracks. How would you describe that?
At the, on Main Street, in the dead end.
The east end of West Main.
Right.
East end of West Main.
All right, sounds good. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
All in favor?
I am, okay.
Done deals.
So I'll reach out to Central Hudson and schedule the inspection and then, based on what they say, we can say yes or no.
They pour like a little slab that's.
Exactly, yeah, it'll be a platform. It also has to have bollards so that a car just can't fly onto it.
Maybe we can take a walk down there sometime.
So if it's grass, that'll be even better.
Exactly.
Okay, uh, let's see. Next we have a big lineup. Thanks, Roberto.
Yeah, thanks, you guys, I appreciate it.
James has been holding up all of these wonderful applications all at once. Not to start the season off good. So you're on deck. First one we have on here is twenty-nine Rock Street.
Okay, great. So, uh, let me see. So I am currently working for the tenant who is putting in a cafe in the space that's currently tightrope interactive.
Now we're on twenty-nine Rock.
Twenty-nine Rock.
Twenty-nine Rock Street.
You can put a cafe there.
You can put a cafe there. So twenty-nine Rock Street, yeah. So the client owns, Bill McComish owns this kind of triangular lot. And currently he's got a driveway that is, I've got, I don't know if it's going to go here. He's got a.
Oh, yeah, I'll know for you.
That's, he's, there's an existing parking space that's on village property and his steps terminate on, on village property as he descends down. It's super tiny, I'm sorry, but. And so you can see here that this black line coming across is the property line along this. There are planted trees there. And so there's this long skinny wedge shape adjacent to Rock Street. And he would like to buy a portion of, so that, you know, he's got, you know, control of that parking space that has kind of been, you know.
So is he looking to buy just the dirt piece?
Yes.
I thought parking isn't committed on this side of the street. I thought parking isn't permitted on that side of the street.
Um, it's what appears to be on his property, but it's actually Village property, it's up the hill a little bit. You're you're right that par- parking is not permitted on that side of the street, but it's off the, well off the shoulder. And there's a driveway that actually, um, is nearly entirely on Village property, but a portion of it actually encroaches on Bill's property, that's the McConville property on the corner of, uh, uh, Kemble and, um, and Rock Street. That's the, that this is kind of, so, um, Kemble Avenue is like here, and so that's the blue house right at the corner, the driveway's actually almost entirely on Village property.
And this is just property of the.
Correct, yeah, so he's got a parking space here, um, that's, um, where the railroad ties and it kind of comes up like that to park it back, um, so he'd like to retain that.
So he's not looking to, he's just looking to buy this piece?
Uh, I think what he'd like to do is is buy, like, is his, his steps come down onto Village property there, I think what he'd like to do is, and the, the, you know, I'm sorry to have this.
I thought it's a step to death here?
So you can see the the front of the cottage, the the white brick cottage, all the way over here is like directly on the power line, so it'd have a little bit of a buffer, so basically.
Right. Now, this is where the dirt is, there's like about, um, six inches of dirt along the, along the.
Uh, it's a little more than that, it's, uh, it's about, uh, twelve and a half feet here, um, over towards McConville, the east end, and then over here.
Yeah, less than a foot, I think. I can read it again.
Um, but it's i- in the neighborhood of about three feet, that's against the power over here, so it's a little more.
Right, then I wasn't looking at the right thing, I don't know, but, I mean, I know what I looked at, but it's, I was envisioning something else, oh. And this is the.
Not the easiest line.
And this is the street one here?
Uh, that's the sewer line.
That's the sewer line.
Wh- what is the sewer line?
The very, sorry, the red line with the S on it.
I gotta go back.
There's, I'm nervous with red lines.
So this red with a S down the center of the street there, that's the sewer, yeah.
That's the sewer line, and the water line is?
Uh, I'm not sure, um, I'm not sure about the water line, um, there's the O H W, which is the overhead wire, which is that black line.
Mm-hmm.
Which is very close to the, to the Village property and by the property interface, well, no, the Village, it's the edge of the road, I should say, is very close to the overhead wire. So, I mean, essentially, what he'd like to buy is essentially to that overhead wire line, um.
How, how, he wants to buy like twelve feet?
It's twelve feet over here at the widest part, and it goes down to about three feet over there.
And so this shows that the two-story dwelling is currently on the pop.
Directly on the the property line.
And it looks like it's going over just a tad.
Yeah, perhaps, yeah, maybe.
On the northeast corner.
Building corner on P L property line, so it's, the the east, the northeast corner is directly on the property line, but it's slightly off over on the west corner.
And and the steps are on Village property.
Correct. The steps to the second prop, the residence there.
Wh- wh- what does he hope to do with the entire piece for, if he can have it, like, what is his, what is his plan?
Yes, why has he retained, why has he retained here?
He is interested in, uh, putting a, a, um, another dwelling unit up the hill, um.
In an I one zone?
Yes, mhm.
Which is prohibited?
Right, so he's in front of the planning board for that, so, um.
Which I think they told him to wait.
Zoning.
Right, for the rezoning, yeah.
Something, yeah. And how would he, anyone have access to the third building?
Um, he is interested in having a driveway cut this way, up here.
By the side, cut through the rocks.
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah, that's some heavy-duty rocks over there.
Scranton, man.
It's an ambitious proposition.
Maybe a cable car or something like that.
Or a subway.
Well, have you seen, have you seen this, have you seen the steps, the steps remind me of San Francisco.
That'd be harder. Yeah, I know. Yeah, this is like Frisco, I always think that when I drive by.
You know what, I really, I'd like to go back and look at this again, now that I see what what's on, but when I went over and looked at it, oh, and I did that, I think on Sunday, I wasn't envisioning all of this, so I have to go back with this.
There's a lot to digest, I just wanted to introduce that to you.
I guess the thing that strikes me is that Rock Street currently is a very narrow street, why would the village want to sell any of the village-owned property to make it less, more narrow in certain narrow areas? That's what strikes me right now.
Who wants that spot where the truck always backs up onto the?
I I think you're thinking of that little spot there, yeah, that is the Village property, um, but the the spot is being used by Bill, yeah.
He's currently parked his vehicle on that little, thing he created with the painting wall.
He's he's parking there now, and that's a no, no parking on that side of the street.
It's been parked there for fifteen years since I remember.
It's it's not on the street shoulder, it's off, and and if you drive by, you think it's in someone's property, it's.
Kinda has to go past it and back up onto it or something.
It's it's akin to the the driveway here that you see in blue for McConville, which, um, is entirely on Village property, except a portion is actually on Bill's property.
The what, the three point eight two feet on Bill, on Bill's property?
I guess that is.
The, the, what?
Over here, um, so.
What James is saying is that a portion of McConville's driveway is on Bill's property.
Over here.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, sorry, I flipped over, right, thanks.
Well, it's like an accessory driveway, it's not really a driveway, it's.
So I I, again, that's my my opinion, I don't know why we would want to sell land to make a road more narrow, where we could.
I think the idea is that he's creating a driveway with off-street parking that would actually benefit all, the two existing residences as well as the third proposed one.
Or we could take it and widen the street.
I don't think three feet's gonna get him a parking area, or you can't park on that side of the street, so if he's gonna have a driveway some, coming up somewhere, and you're gonna have parking for two residents plus a third one, where are they gonna go there if there's a driveway through there?
Yeah, that's a, that'd remove a lot of rock.
Well, the idea is that we, the, the, the road, the driveway would be cut up here, and then there's parking up here.
He's gonna have to bring a lot of fill, if this is the top, it's a, it's a steep area, I guess that's not my problem.
Is he, yeah, is he gonna like just take the whole walk down?
I was gonna talk to him, something about that, yeah.
How long has he owned this property?
Um, a long time, I don't know, twenty-five years, now that I've read it.
So behind.
Probably longer than that.
This is the boulevard, there's a house.
And and it's. And it's currently, it's I one today, and it's currently non-conforming, there are two residences on it, an I one permits a single residence as a primary residence, and then the caretaker as a second residence. Where the caretaker is responsible for the industry that occurs in the I one, on the I one property, so, it's it's non-conforming already, but anyway, yeah.
So this is, this is McConville?
Um, that is, uh, uh, you know, McConville is sort of the corner.
Oh, this is, this is Percicello?
Percicello, yeah, 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 this, the, this, um, in the Village maps is inaccurate to the shape of the property, it's like more of a triangle rather than a.
Okay. Right, right.
And this is the condos?
Correct, yeah.
I'm I'm just trying to envision if he starts blasting this rock away, what's gonna happen to everything around here, which to me is like a big issue. Uh, I need to, I need to, I guess this one again.
Mm-hmm.
Do you have anything?
Uh, I would like to learn more about it, yeah, but I don't, I'm not optimistic at all.
Well, feel free.
What's that?
I'm not optimistic at all, I don't really see how it's possible, that's a really steep hill right there, yeah.
Yeah, I kind of tend to agree.
But but we can't make our decision based upon what the owner proposes to do at some point in the future.
Right, yeah.
We can only make our decision based upon what he's proposing to do with the expansion of his property on the Rock Street edge.
He wants to purchase.
But with the expansion of that property, not, if we're not thinking about whether he's gonna build or not, that's, you can't park on that side of the street, so why, why do you park, why do you drive?
What he will argue is that what he's purchasing is a parallel driveway, so he's not parking on this, on this.
So this is twelve feet, this is more so.
What's his, I don't know.
Three feet, I mean, I guess if he is down in the twelve-foot area, you could.
Well, I I think that's what James is saying, is that the area that he wants to purchase is, I'm guessing this.
Well, he wants to purchase, he must purchase, oh, that's not his property, he must have purchased from here down to here.
Oh, yeah, no.
So over a hundred feet.
Where down to where?
From the steps, which are, that's, that's on our property, that that lines our property line, so from here down to here, it's twelve and a half.
Actually. Yeah. Right.
Past that, actually, Johnson all the way here.
Okay, all the way, almost to the.
It just seemed to me logical to bring it to the conclusion of the end of the property, like, yeah.
So he's going to put it in the driveway that's being used by McComish?
No, no, I I would say perpendicular, like, cutting across here, you know, and then, it it makes sense to to bring it to there if you're gonna kind of bring it.
Right, yeah, got it.
I'm gonna go back and look at that.
And to make that parkable, you have to go into the rock quite a ways, just right there.
Well, just to buy it, he doesn't, just, just to purchase the land from the village, he has, doesn't have to do anything.
Yeah. Right, yeah, the intent is not to, into, you know, start making parking here, it's basically to legalize this, and that, you know, kinda control the the portion of the steps coming down to the, you know, to the street. Um, and this whole thing is another, a whole other issue, you know, that.
Well, the steps are relatively new, the steps were not there in whenever.
Well, the, so, out, from some perspective, when I was the building inspector, I gave him a staff work order when he was filling the steps further out, like, right out to the street edge, and I said, that's ridiculous, there's, you can push them back, you know?
Mm-hmm.
And so I made him shorten the land, landing as much as was possible with the, the fall of the grade, so it's now about three feet back from the edge of the street.
So it would have been worse.
Would have been worse.
Than it is now.
Yeah, my point was, you know, like, the next mill pile's gonna take out your steps, you know, yeah.
At the end of it's still three feet on the Village property, two and a half, whatever.
Something like that, you know, yeah, but it was, you know, it was similar to that before, it was, you know, it was a repair, it, um.
Okay, so we'll hold on that one.
So there's, there's two sheds back here, Jim?
Yes, mhm.
Which you can't really see, I have to go back and look at it.
Yeah, and, you know, and to put it in perspective, you know, um, in the proposal to the planning board is those sheds are in ways that's reducing our building area, I don't know, a lot, but.
That's another one.
Okay, next is the two oh seven.
Two oh seven, okay, so this one I have a lot more to show, you know, uh, this one is, um, up in the corner of the Avenue Street, um, I'm gonna be quicker about hitting this out. Just, if you can stop, yeah, so, uh, the top page, you can see it's a dating and watching survey, I'm like, I didn't bring it back in myself, so I'm gonna, I'm just gonna, yeah.
Yeah, you can, I'll, I'll come and see, so I wanted to picture of this today, so at least I know what this looks like.
So you can see that, um, well, we've got, um, the the house used to have a porch, and then, you know, uh, gone back to the sandboard maps from about eighteen eighty to, uh, to see the original, um, porch that was original on the house. So we're recreating the the porch that was there, there's remnants of what it was in the facade, you can see it in the siding and stuff like that. So it's a, it's approximately a five-foot deep porch, and the, um, at one point in the, uh, Main Street was widened and the sidewalk was added, it was also recreated, so the whole pitch pitches back to the house. So they've had, been having silrot and other issues because the drainage is to the house instead of the way it was.
But where was the porch, on the, on the main street side or?
On the main street side, yeah, and, uh, so you can see on, um, the next drawings, um, you can see where we're putting the proposed porch, um, in the existing property lines. So, um, all up and down Main Street, you know, you see those small retaining walls that are out there that are doing the same purpose that we're proposing to do, um, to put a low retaining wall to correct the, the grade so that it's no longer draining towards the house, but actually the way from the house, allowing the step down, you drew some sections as well on there, so you can see, and you do that, a bit of rendering of that elevation of the porch. So, uh, we've got historic re, uh, board approval and also, um, um, zoning board approval, and that, um, pending, um, the front yard. Well, the the porch has been okay, but the, uh, the stone wall was, uh, pending, uh, the transfer of that property.
Will the, the wall be like the continuance of the wall that comes around from Academy Street?
Um, we we actually are not showing that, it could be that, but that's, it's all within, um, Village property, yeah, so, um, that's a good question, there's, there's a stone wall
Right.
that wraps around the corner and then stops just a little bit just as it reaches, yeah.
Holding the yard back.
Yeah.
This is, that's Academy.
That's pretty far away from here.
Yeah.
Now, the s- the wall you're proposing is that it'd be in the grass, at the edge of the grass?
Um, right, right at the edge of the property line, so where's the sidewalk, exactly, yeah, and you have it, you can see that little return there, so you have it just past the house.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then having an open portion of the lawn, she actually wanted to, how that opens, so.
So you wouldn't continue the wall from Academy?
Yeah, that's not the plan, you know, it's gonna be a lot more work, yeah, and she also wanted, wanted a more open feeling of that. So, um, so you can see on, uh, this page, it's just a blow-up of our, um, our site plan, uh, where heavy dash line is the property line as it is now. And so what we're proposing is to put in this kind of duller stone wall with a walkway from the sidewalk going to the new porch, and so to purchase all the way to the sidewalk edge there.
So the grass is Village property, basically, I'm sure.
Correct, it's right up, yeah, to five feet off the house.
Is, oh, so Villa Jones against her house right now?
Um, against where the porch used to be and where we're putting the porch back to, so, yeah, so this is the proposed porch right now, but it's actually not there, it was removed at some point.
So it's eight feet of Village property?
Correct, yeah.
And what is the, um, site plan of the house to the east, how does, how does its front yard setback line up with what's being proposed here?
It's consistent with that, um, so the, all up and down the street, um, the the buildings are all sighted at the same distance?
I I'm, I'm asking, the the, the reason for my question is, this wall that is being proposed, how does that marry with the building to the east and its front yard?
So if you look at the first page, the dating Watson survey, you can see that there's, um, an L shape or K model there, that's art, that's consistent with it, although that's made out of pressure treated wood or a retired tile.
Retaining wall that is pointing to a black line, is that correct? That's a very black line.
This right here.
It's the, this line, as opposed to this line, what is this?
Yeah, that, I I don't know what that line is.
I have a question, if that's lush, would that's a, I'm looking.
Why, why not, although, retaining wall closer to the house?
It looks like that's sitting down.
Yeah. That was my question.
What's that?
To put, it wouldn't be consistent with the rest of the street.
Okay, like the corner, the corner wall and all.
Right, all of the, you know, all of the houses up and down is right to the sidewalk, and, you know, the the neighbor right there has the.
Up on the side. Well, that's not true, James, if you go up a few, where Bill Bailey used to live, um, which has the double garage there, there's a wooden fence.
We need to do a field trip.
That is on the sidewalk, but the house is set back from that.
Uh-huh. Um.
There's a wooden fence.
That's the house that's.
It's the last house before, um, Tim Burton's house.
Yeah, yeah. The yellow, the yellow house, yeah, um, but that I don't recall, that all of that house is down there, it's exactly the same situation, those same walls.
The house on the corner of May and Chestnut, that has a front yard, it has a retaining wall, um, and then a front yard setback from it, and I thought that, um, let's try it, Ruth, Ruth. The next house up, the double house, the next house up, she has a very short retaining wall and then on the front, you, I don't know, Ruth.
Where are we talking?
Um, the corner is, um, uh, the, there's the corner house, um, Chestnut and May, and then Ruth has the double house.
Did you make pictures?
I know where you're made out of.
Yeah, and then there's the house where. And then there's the house where, what's his name, Tullor used to live.
These flower beds are. Yeah, Danable.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, Danable.
Just like that plant's right at the entrance to the.
The second house up. I think it, I think it has a very short retaining wall, maybe a foot, maybe a foot. So, I'm.
One thing here is the, it's the, it looks like the level on the upside is, if you bring a porch straight across there, it's gonna be, from what I remember, it seems like it's down quite a bit farther, whereas this showing this coming, well, it's not the page, but.
So we're, we're correcting the grade.
How are you, how, what does that mean, correcting the grade?
But you're going under the sill, aren't you, over the door?
No.
No?
Mm.
So what's happening there?
So, the, well, under the sill of the door, yeah, so you're, I mean, it's, it's pretty much a step out onto, onto the porch. It's, it's not much of a step down, because there's not a lot of, room there. So, you can see a little bit there, so it's, it's pretty much.
Right. So what I'm saying is, it looks like this is coming out level with the, coming out level with the, uh, the sidewalk.
So here's the sidewalk, um, so.
Yeah, so how much down are we on this?
So there are two steps down from the sidewalk to the, it, it may be, let me just.
Hmm, doesn't look like two steps down, but it's like a step down.
Um, there, there was a, it had been a different, uh, uh, drawing, a different drawing of the sections, this is at the, at the east end of the house.
Right, yeah.
So like, it's not a section through the steps.
Right.
But it, it does give you a sense of how it steps, how the sidewalk is higher than the house currently.
Mm-hmm.
And so, you know, the, the goal is that we're getting the, to pitch the slopes of the draining away from the house, and that's why we need front yard space to get the drainage.
Can I see it, I have.
But doesn't this, doesn't this exacerbate the drainage problem onto Academy?
There's, there's a sidewalk height.
Right, no, that's what I'm saying, it's not, it's almost flush with the, with the deck on the porch.
No. Because the drainage would be handled on the side. It's not.
A little higher, but if you look at this, this is way down.
Where's the drain?
So right now, currently, it's.
So there's no way, I mean, it's a double deck.
Yeah, it drains onto the property.
Oh, it's also based on windows.
It drains onto the property right now, is what you're saying.
Right, so the sidewalk drains onto a, and that drain, literally drains into a basin.
Kind of.
Okay.
Well, I guess it doesn't go.
And so the idea is to, that the pitch is corrected to pitch away from the house.
Well, I told the down, though, is a big difference, certainly.
Yeah, the drainage is, yeah.
We're creating a swell on the property.
Road trip.
Um, into the, uh, into the property, having a dry well.
Road trip.
So that it's, it's paying a ton weight on the site, it's not going to.
Okay, and that, I, I don't understand, because you've got the retaining wall here.
That's not a retaining wall, that's a, that's a site, sorry, that was created by Beatty Watson.
So, so this is the retaining wall that's being proposed. Right now, the water's coming in here, is what you said.
Mm-hmm. Right.
And so the question was, how does this not exacerbate the stormwater drain onto Academy Street? And you said you're, you're creating a swell in here?
Uh, right, um, this, the idea is that we are managing the water here, instead of, instead of it pitching towards the house, we're pitching it back to, towards the street, and then we're having a, a shallow swell here, and then a dry well, so that the water is being attenuated into the soil, past the house.
When, when you point like that, it implies that you're doing something in the sidewalk.
Mm-hmm. It's not, not in the sidewalk, here's the retaining wall, and so the idea is that, right now, the, the drainage points slopes to the house.
Yes.
So, to, to create a shallow correction to that, so, and that's why the, the retaining wall is important, so we create the step down from the sidewalk level. So that the, the, the water is drained away from the house and then diverted down to a drain, uh, dry well, past the house, but within the property. So that the, the water from this area is absorbed into the soil here, not onto.
And, and, and my question is, with the sidewalk, doesn't that, doesn't the stormwater drain from the sidewalk exacerbate the stormwater onto Academy?
The, the stormwater, the water off of the sidewalk either, if it's incorrectly, should be pitching into the gutter on Main Street.
Which it is not, is, which is why you want the retaining wall.
Well, the, the soil here is pitched towards the property, the, the sidewalk is higher than her, than her, than her house.
Right.
And that's been detrimental to the house.
How wide is the property, the sidewalk to her house, that she would, she would have invited?
Um.
I'm sorry. She wants to buy all the way to the corner?
Yeah, it's, it's, uh, roughly, um, eight foot four, something like that.
Eight and a half, roughly. And then the whole length of that property?
Um, at least to do the, the retaining wall, that's because, it doesn't have to be the whole length of the property.
Do you know the, um, can I see the Beatty Watson?
Mm.
So, what she owns is, does she own this wall, and is this village property here, or is this her wall?
The, the wall is on village property, but it's, you know, it's, it's one of these things where, you know, you know, they, they, they took, you know, um, the corner all the way out to here, because kind of the main, you know, so it's.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
So this is the, this is all village property, so, and this is all village property?
Mm-hmm.
How wide is the porch length, I mean?
Um, it is, uh, I don't remember, I think it's twenty.
Can we scale it up with this map?
Yeah, yeah, there, there could.
I don't need to do it now, I just wanna, I just wanna understand it looks like.
Twenty-four, twenty-four feet wide, twenty-four.
It's twenty-four.
So they're looking to purchase the width of the house by, out to the sidewalk by eight feet, or?
Yeah, the idea is to bring the retaining wall further past, so that there's kind of a.
Like in the drawing.
Term, yeah.
So how much footage are they proposing to?
Let's say it's, you know, forty feet, something like that.
Forty by eight?
Yeah.
See, that, that to me is like, animals wanna say, if we're gonna say yes, then we're gonna say goodbye to the piece. And then you gotta, you know, the village has two feet, and you got, you know.
Yeah, well, it gets into like the viewing, you know, like area of non-visual obstruction, you know, so that the corner's not obscured, you know,
Right, mm-hmm.
but that's, that's a planning board issue, you know.
Because, according to James, the Villa Joneses tip, that we own this and we own the whole frontage. So to sever it just a little piece doesn't make that way out of sense.
Well, forty feet by eight feet, thirty feet piece.
Yeah, but then you've got a couple of feet here, whatever, and maybe another twenty or so or more.
So I just, so I'm, I'm gonna go take a look at this, so, um, so, we're, we're talking about the, so in the photo, or in, in any of this, it's the, the deck will start under the door, it's not gonna drop down, it's, it'll be as high as you can get it to the door.
Exactly, mm-hmm.
Right, I'm just concerned about, it seems like that far corner is down a lot lower from what I remember, so like.
It's a road, it's a lot to.
Like, oh, we're only, we're going twelve feet from the center of the door, I imagine, with the, with the porch?
Yeah, mm-hmm.
Okay.
And I've further drawn, so you have, um, I've printed them all out, but I figured I was trying to keep the footage from being over one even, you know, I wish I had them here.
So we'll take a look at it.
Mm-hmm.
You want this back, or can I?
You can have that, please, yeah. And I can bring those other drawings to table, cup out.
And you were saying the, so below, uh, between, uh, Academy and Maine, there's those stone walls in front of all those, they come out right to the sidewalk, I can't.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
So whoever's going there to take a look, take a look at those, too.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
The precedent.
Those are ours.
Oh, no, I mean, it's, it'll give you an idea what a stone wall going right to.
I mean, this wall?
Yeah.
That one, not that one, there's the buildings down on the other side of the street.
Now, you're gonna, is this still gonna match the wall that's on Academy, or is it gonna be different, or?
Um, it's, it's gonna essentially match that. Take a look with a little bit, so that, uh, so that it's down.
Okay, so, we'll take a look at that one also.
Stay in the last.
The next one looks simple-ish.
It's very easy.
You don't, you don't have to get.
I thought that one was gonna be easier.
Like when you save them all up for one visit?
Yeah, you know.
Yeah. We should do field trip, I mean, I tried to look at them all, but I wasn't always looking at what I was doing.
So, um, this is basically an interior plan, but it's, it's the, um.
I don't care about that.
Yeah, so it's, uh, so, back to one fourteen Main Street, um, uh, good luck on the, the property and the, the, uh, his tenant wants to put in a, a cafe, um, in front of the planning board, that's their safe area. Um, and so, he is interested in having the ability to, to, um, rent out to her or future tenants the, um, sidewalk area and, um, to include the sidewalk area. So, um, I think he's looking for a space of approximately six feet deep off the front of the, the, um, structure. The sidewalk's about twenty feet wide at that location.
And you know, we told him no before. Yes, we told him.
We did.
Yeah, right, come on, change your.
I didn't know that, I didn't.
Anyway, I think there was a consensus on the board, which I put in my, in my email to you, that we didn't wanna sell properties that weren't stoops, and even, I would, looking back at some of the stoops that we sold, I think we just lose control of that, and we sold them for liability issues, people falling off or tripping on them, so that's why we did sell them.
Mm-hmm.
And then there were a few that we sold because, like your place, that you needed that to make your place work, or like the place on the corner of Academy,
That's right, mm-hmm.
and it would be more interesting doing that because it makes it work, but.
That's what I thought.
This, yeah, this whole piece of sidewalk from the parking lot to the corner, there's no stoops.
Um, so. Uh-huh, right.
So if he's gonna put, if he wants to buy it to put a stoop or, you know, even to.
And then it's his property, he can do a cafe or whatever he wants, okay, which we don't, we don't have control.
He can do whatever he wants, once he sells it to him.
Right.
So, we do not wanna, I don't wanna sell that property.
Yeah.
Yes, so it's.
Don't have any control of that.
This one's a no, that's not an easy one.
How wide is the sidewalk?
Uh, it's about twenty feet wide.
It's about wide.
Twenty feet.
Is it twenty?
That's very damn.
It's like sixteen.
Doesn't matter.
Yeah, this one's a no.
All right.
So, so we gotta go field trips on it, you're like, you're like a pizza rep.
Okay. So I guess we'll, we'll get back to you and try to do it by before our next meeting, or.
Yeah.
Great, yeah, and, uh, I'd be glad to be there to help orientate, or.
Okay, all right. If you hear your numbers on here, if you imagine.
Um, my office number's on there, and, uh.
On the email, probably.
Yeah, it's in my suit, or.
So it's just the best number you use?
Um, always a cell phone will get me, but, you know, if there's always something to do, I'll figure out, I don't see.
Okay.
In the packet.
Good. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, James.
Thank you. Okay, um, before we go into the approvals, uh, we just wanted to talk a little about the code update, um, and, and when we can schedule some meetings. I think a lot kind of, uh, work with you, Lynn, as much as we can on.
Thank you, I am so sorry about the last one.
No, no, that's okay, I just say if we're gonna schedule some, if you can't make seven, then we'll move it to seven thirty or whatever.
Yeah, um, I can do seven.
What's that?
I can do seven, no, no.
Sure?
Yeah.
Okay.
Which, are we talking about particular dates, though?
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
So the code update committee, um, typically met the first and third Wednesdays of the month, but using that calendar, the next date would be January fifteenth. So I'm proposing a meeting of an hour and a half duration on January fifteenth, starting at either seven or seven thirty, whatever we can to accommodate your schedule. And what I will do is I will circulate three to four topics in Word format, redlined, with identification of what potential issues might be in those documents. Um, the, uh, the requirement is that you read through those documents before the meeting, so that we can have a very, um, a very focused discussion on the content of each of the, of the topics.
And these gonna be, you said topics, are they gonna be specific chapters?
Yes, oh, we'll only be doing this on a chapter by chapter basis.
Okay, perfect.
And so if there's a number we can get in one night, like, you know, whatever.
Right.
The, the number that we're, there's small changes to that aren't controversial, we can go over them. But we'll just have a hard stop time of an hour and a half, hard stop.
Hard stop, that's a great, that's a great phrase, yes.
That's what we're not looking for.
Run stop. Okay, so January fifteenth.
Like a Wall Street guy talking.
Seven or seven thirty, actually, since, since they're Wednesdays, seven thirty would be better. Okay.
Um, I, I don't have coverage to close the shop in, so.
Seven thirty, is that okay?
So seven thirty.
I prefer seven thirty-five, but.
Okay, so seven thirty, thank you, I got it.
She just totally ignored you.
Of the way, oh.
And we're doing, we'll be doing one in the month of January, okay, so.
Next Wednesday.
Fifteen, it's next Wednesday, okay.
When will we, when will we get the chapters, Mike?
I'll get them out to you tomorrow.
Okay.
Seven thirty. Looks to me.
Next we have approval of bills.
Um, save for this one, which needs another Hancock, Derek. Um, I move to approve batch number fifty-four ten, uh, for a total of sixty-four thousand five hundred seventy-nine dollars and forty-seven cents.
I'll second that, any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, let's see, approval of minutes, workshop meeting, uh, eleven twenty-six nineteen, I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, just the meeting twelve ten nineteen, I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
I'll second from Fran.
Fran, I'm in.
Fran.
Fran, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 And finally, uh, twelve seventeen nineteen, I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second that one.
We have discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I have to abstain, I was not in attendance.
Okay, one abstention. Thank you for, uh, you guys are, like, go back and forth with Michael before the meeting, which is much appreciated, you know, we don't drag things on now. Thank you for making corrections before. Um, I think that's it, anything from our, oh, yeah. We have, uh, yet to get fireworks. I finally, I called one company that I think did West Point ones, and, uh, I think it was West Point.
I sent you the name of the West Point.
Centauri, no.
I think so, I sent you the name of the big wrestling club.
I think it was them, they called, he just called me last night, said he couldn't do it.
It's a big company.
I know, it's huge.
Yeah.
Hundred and thirty years, he talked to me for so long, it couldn't, the ear almost fell off.
Centauri, yeah.
Yeah, they, they can't do it, and they don't have a barge either. Anyway, so we're looking for.
We need to do it another week, another day.
Yeah, well, or another day. So, we'll see what happens this week, I'll see if I can find some. Anything else? Any? Okay. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Are you thinking of getting these properties sometimes?
Yeah. Good, what, are you around tomorrow?
Um.